Okay. Whoa, that's scary, isn't it? Okay, I'm calling to order the City Council regular meeting Tuesday, October 14th, 6:00 P.M. I call this meeting to order. Dina, do we have a forum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I am excited. I would like to have Kelton Gunter, a leader of Parker County Conservatives and a precinct chair, please come forward, lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Lord, I thank you that you are God of peace. And, Lord, I thank you for the peace that we are seeing in the Middle East, especially in the hostages returned, Lord. We're very thankful for that. Lord, I thank you for the love that you give us. I thank you for that we are known as your disciples by our love for one another. Lord, I pray your blessings on each of these who have put their name and their person forward to be elected, to serve us in elected office. I have great admiration for each and everyone here. Lord, I pray your blessings on their families and on themselves for their commitment to you and to this city. Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do that? Do you want to suggest?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, number one, the mayor's comments, the city manager's separation details. I've had citizens ask about... Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip them? Yeah, I jumped right there. Okay, so we'll start with the citizens' comments. Sorry about that. First, we have Roy Ramos.
Hello. I want to address the recent statements made by Councilman Member Eric Contreras concerning Mayor Teresa Palmer and her campaign financing. While transparency and accountability are vital to public service, so too are fairness, consistency, and respect for the offices we hold and the people serving them. Mayor Palmer has acknowledged receiving campaign contributions from Mr. Spencer Hodge, who is now facing legal proceedings. These contributions were publicly disclosed, publicly reported, and importantly, not in violation of any campaign finance laws. That is a matter of record. Suggest criminal complicity without evidence or due process is not transparency, it is trial by insinuation. If Councilmember Contreras is truly committed to exposing unethical campaign financing, I ask whether he is willing to apply the same aggressive scrutiny to other public officials, including those seeking higher office. For example, Attorney General Ken Paxton accepted campaign contributions from Nate Hawke and now convicted felon. Will Mr. Contreras publicly challenge Mr. Paxton with the same fervor he has shown towards Mayor Palmer? Selective outrage erodes the very trust it claims to defend. If we are to build a culture of integrity, let us do so with consistency, civility, and a commitment to facts, not speculation. I stand for accountability, I also stand for fairness, and I believe our community deserves both. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Okay. Next, we have Alicia Beulahs. Does that sound right?
Beulahs.
Beulahs.
Hello, my name is Alicia Beulahs. I live at 356 Mister Drive here in Willow Park, Texas. I have known Teresa for over 12 years, and she is a wonderful person with a heart of hope. I'm proud to call her my friend and my mayor. I knew she was running for mayor. We, my husband and I, voted for her. She won a free and fair election and is doing her best to try to do things, get things done. I am very upset to find out that the City Council is not working with our new mayor to provide the changes and the things we need for our community. It doesn't make any sense that you all were elected to better our community, and all you want to do is try to tear her down any way you can. Put yourself in her shoes. Suppose you were in a new role as mayor and doing everything you can to help our community. I ask you, City Council of Willow Park, to take a deep look at yourselves and figure out if you can work with this new mayor, or if you cannot, then please remove yourself from the council. We need people who are going to work together and make our community better. Godspeed, Teresa. We believe in you and your ability to serve as our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tandy Blackstock.
Good evening. My name is Tandy Blackstock, and I'm a resident of Willow Park, Texas. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Palmer, council, citizens, and citizens for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've heard several current council members describe their role as a thankless job. Have you ever stopped to consider why it feels that way? Could it be that many citizens no longer support your decisions or leadership because their voices are not being heard? Have you truly listened to the majority of the residents, the same residents who voted for Mayor Palmer and entrusted this council to represent... Sorry, I lost my thought. Have you truly listened to the majority of the residents, the same citizens who voted for Mayor Palmer and entrusted this council to represent them fairly? Or have you chosen instead to serve a small group who are still angry about the previous mayor's loss and resent change? Council members are entrusted to guide, protect, and serve our city with integrity, to do good, cause no harm, and represent the voices of the citizens. It is a council member's responsibility to honor the mayor, to serve the city and its residents with integrity, transparency, fairness, and commitment for the greater good. The poor conduct and behavior seen from city council members and some city employees is deeply troubling. Rather than working in unity to uplift our community, personal agendas and division have taken priority. The residents of Willow Park see disregard and disrespect towards our mayor by council and some staff. Trying to discredit the mayor as an individual only diminishes respect many once held for you as city employees and city council members. Destructive behavior from council and staff only shows that person's true character, and it erodes public trust. The last city council meeting was extremely disturbing. Making alleged accusations and sharing gossip to discredit someone does not create unity. It's not the role of a council member or city employees to spread rumors, shame, or attack community members. When tactics like these are used, they raise serious questions about integrity and personal agendas. The conduct and behavior that Willow Park has endured by the council and some city staff members or staff is not leadership. It is not service to the community. The disrespect and disregard are not what the mayor or the people of Willow Park deserve. Our city needs leadership that fosters integrity, unity, respect, and trust. Several months ago... I love public speaking. Several months ago, I stood before this council asking if you would want one of your loved ones or someone you cared about to be mistreated. I asked if you would stand by silently or if you would speak out against it. I personally will not stand by silently for anyone to be mistreated. I will never apologize for standing behind Mayor Palmer. Is she perfect? No, she's not. Are any of you council members or city employees or citizens perfect? Absolutely not. Mayor Palmer promised to listen to and represent the citizens of Willow Park. To list a few, she promised to be an active mayor, improve transparency and communication, give citizens a seat at the table, begin the daunting task of fixing our roads, challenge poor decisions, involve local business owners, and have an open-door policy. Mayor Palmer has honored all of those promises. She is open, honest, authentic, straightforward, and clear with communication, and she demonstrates accountability in her decisions and actions in a professional manner. She does all of this and more with grace. I have stated before that council members hold positions of great influence. You can either choose to plant seeds to lead to growth, unity, and a stronger future for our city, or you can plant weeds with seeds of negativity, division, and harm. Continuing to be negative and promoting division, basically being a weed, will only choke out the beauty and potential of Willow Park. The citizens want to have trustworthy city employees and council members that they can be held in high regard. Council members and city employees, I urge you to reflect on how your conduct impacts the community that you are meant to serve. I truly hope you will examine your conscience and consider whether your actions align with the responsibilities of your duties. If a council member or city employee is unwilling or unable to serve with integrity, respect, and fairness, the honorable force of action is to resign your position. It is my sincere prayer that we all come together and be the light, a source of support, healing, and cooperation. Let us move forward together by planting seeds of respect, love, and progress. Let's make Willow Park a place we can all be proud to call home, a place where everyone feels heard, valued, and supported. Two scriptures I just want to share with you real quick. Psalms 133, verse 1 says, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." And the second one is 2 Corinthians 13:11. Finally, brothers and sisters, rejoice! Strive for full restoration; encourage one another; be of one mind; live in peace, and the God of love and peace will be with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tandy. Okay, next, we have Nick Jones.
Said she's not much public speaking. I thought she did a great job.
Mm-hmm.
Mine will be pretty short. My name is Nick Jones. Moved here to Parker County, 2020. I'm looking to move to Willow Park. I've seen a lot and heard a lot. Don't know many of you. Go to church with you, and I met you through a great friend of mine. I was in education for 15 years, sadly to say, public education, and got out of it. But I see a lot of the same thing that I've seen in public education. We have liberal attorneys. I'm guessing you're an attorney. I'm not necessarily speaking of you. I know you're new, right? But we do have liberal attorneys that come in, and they get paid off of turmoil. So the more turmoil that's going on, the more they get paid. Honestly, I'm not calling for anything, not saying anything, don't know a whole lot that's going on. But to me, I would like to see somebody call Ms. Palmer, go have lunch with her, talk to her. If you haven't done that, you're not doing your job. Matter of fact, I'll carry you out to eat. You and her just want to go sit down and eat, okay? If it's all of us, it may be a little cheaper restaurant, but just a few of us, I can carry you somewhere nice. But I would just like to see people trying to work together. We've seen this in our country. The citizens voted for a president that we have now. He's a felon. I voted for him. Loved him to death. But the citizens voted for him, and we have liberals that are trying to fight him at every step of the way. Don't let this be like that here. We've got to find a way to come together. I'm speaking on behalf of my kids. I'm speaking on behalf of these people's kids. We can fight and do all this and argue and complain, but if you're not trying to sit down and have a conversation with somebody, you're not trying to fix a problem, you're just trying to be part of the problem. Man got killed a month ago. Birthday was yesterday. His whole belief was to be able to have a conversation with somebody that you disagree with. We've gotten away from that in society. If I have an issue with you, sir, Mr. Smith, I want to come and speak to you, Mr. Smith, personally. But that's how I am. I'm sorry. That's how I am. That's how we got to get back to. We got to quit. This is a lady, for one, right? This is a lady. You might not agree with her all the time, but we're supposed to, as men, we're supposed to treat ladies with respect and not speak to them the way that some people do, okay? I get mad at my wife, but I got to watch how I speak to her. She's a lady, right? Okay? I would just like to, I would like to see us at least try, try to get along, like try to, that we're working for the people. She was elected by the people. You guys were elected by the people. It's time for you to do the people's job, okay? It's time for you to do the work that the people sent you do. You're not getting anything done if we're having a bigger and fight the whole time. It's going to take every one of you to work together. And again, I was not calling you out as the term. Okay? But we got to figure out a way to work together. Got to figure out a way to... If you're arguing, we're not making Willow Park any better. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marcy Galley.
My daughter's going to stand up here with me. This is Gwendolyn. Marcy and Gwendolyn Galley, 500 Squaw Creek Road, Willow Park. So I rewrote this probably three or five times because I was very angry at what happened at the last meeting. Our city desperately needs to move forward, and our citizens deserve city government that works together. Some have witnessed the dysfunction firsthand, and others have seen it on videos. I need to address what happened at the end of the last city council meeting. A very poor decision was made to attack a private citizen for political gain. And I look to all of Willow Park's public officials to make sure that such an embarrassing display never happens again, all of us. It is not enough to simply disagree with one of your colleagues while you watch bad decisions unfold. Bad actions need to be called out immediately and stopped. If you proclaim to be a Christian, please act like it. We all love to proclaim that we're Christians, but sometimes doing what's hard and uncomfortable, we choose not to do. What happened at the last city council meeting that I did not attend, someone at the dais, anyone other than the person making the allegations and attacking a private citizen, someone needed to speak up and say, "Out of order. We're not doing this. We're not attacking private citizens from the dais. That's not city business." I would hope that all of y'all would agree. And our mayor deserves better than false allegations. That's all I'm going to say with that. I think egos have been bruised, and I think public officials who want to shut out any public involvement in local government should come to terms with those feelings. You need to consider seriously resigning if you want to shut out the public, period. The benefits of becoming a home rule city will usher in citizen oversight and influence in a way that will give citizens a bigger voice in the future governance of our city. That is what the citizens are hopeful for. So now I'm going to address some of the items on the agenda. Item number 10. Why would anyone recommend removing the mayor from agenda setting and coordinating supplements and amendments? Why was the online code never updated, and why does the appendix state that ordinance 802-19 was never approved? I've done the research, so I already know the answers to these questions, but it's important to ask them in public. I am asking for the council to vote this item down because it's nothing more than petty retaliation, in my opinion. We need, we don't need more drama at the dais. So what I want to say on item 10 is it is my understanding from the research that I've done. There was an ordinance, 802-19, that was proposed, and it wasn't acted. It either wasn't acted on, or it didn't end up in the city council meeting minutes. It was readdressed a couple of months later when it seemed to be approved in the city council meeting minutes as the just governance ordinance, the governance policy, rather. So it current, that policy right now does allow for the mayor and the city administrator to both coordinate agendas, supplements, amendments, all of that. Why are we wanting to take the mayor out of it? I hope that this governing body will vote against that recommendation on item 10. Item 6. Why is Polito's Chapter 380 being discussed again? I thought an extension was already approved a couple of meetings back to cover the expense of a fire suppression system. Correct me if I'm wrong. Item 16. Why is there an EDC discussion about the Bluffs, the area now called the Clarion? This MOU, the MOU that was presented in a packet, thank you very much for that transparency. It specifically stated that there would be no incentives requested for this development, and the DA is supposed to reflect the MOU. So this is very confusing to me. I told Mr. Holland, I've told Mr. Adams, thank you for not asking our city for any more incentives. Just develop. Kudos to the mayor for the agenda items on the severance agreement and the future agenda items requested, and asking Encore to address the issues with the tree trimming. The items requested, and I'm out of time. To discuss appointment of the financial advisory committee and discuss the process to update our 2014 comp plan. Thank you very much. Please work together, hold each other accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Next, next, we have Spencer Hodge.
Mayor, council members, neighbors, three weeks ago, statements were made about, during a special meeting, and I'm here to set the facts straight. Eric? I'm here, thanks. First, the lunch incident was, I was arrested on an outstanding warrant that arose from a prior traffic stop for failure to signal. During the stop, I was informed that my driver's license was invalid. The, when officers began a lawful search of my vehicle, I proactively informed them that there was an unloaded pistol underneath my driver's seat, so no one would be surprised. I was released the following day, and I respect the officers who handled the matter, and I appreciate their professionalism. Second, rumors circulated afterwards that I was a parole violator. That is not true. I will not speculate at this time about the source of the claim, though I know who it was. I want the public record to be accurate. Fourth, the, excuse me, third, the campaign finance was suggested that I gave over $11,000 to Teresa's campaign. My cash contribution to Teresa's campaign was $1,000. And when I was, exactly, when I was arrived, when I, I guess, who was it that called me? Dixie called me and said that we were about to run out of signs, and we were discussing who originally made the signs. We wanted to keep it at a local vendor instead of sending it back out to, to an online vendor. We had someone in Tarrant County make those signs, and I was reimbursed after the campaign. Now, the rest were reported as, and truly were, in-kind contributions. In-kind contributions are non-monetary funds or services reported at fair market value, as the law states to be done. These contributions were a community event that my wife and I hosted for a meeting greet for the mayor. We hosted at the top acre of her property with the second round of the Masters. By law, everything involved in that event, whether donated, borrowed, must be recorded at fair market value. Fifth, a prior dispute was raised alongside my Parker County mug shot. Eric, you called me a thief and a con man. That matter involved a business dispute regarding a construction project six years ago. I know that because my daughter was born on the day that I got a voicemail that the contractor broke into the home. The court set an amount to resolve it, and I paid that, $35,000, over half of the total project cost. I cooperated with law enforcement, provided a detailed statement, and expressed my sorrow and empathy for the owner regarding the events that had taken place, and took responsibility for my part. That is the full context, and police reports will confirm this. Next, it was claimed that I've been going around trying to raise money in surrounding communities. That is false. If anyone believes otherwise, please provide the specifics. I've asked no one for money. A question was posed to the mayor implying that I might be her financial planning client. By rule, financial planners are prohibited from confirming or denying client relationships. That confidentiality is meant to protect the public and remove any doubt. I'm not a... Regarding my presence at City Hall, I'm not going to go over those, all of those right now. The first time was during Teresa's new administration to practice parliamentary procedure. The second was a development meeting, as the community news reported that Teresa came in with Hodge in tow. This is not true. I was 30 minutes late to that meeting, and voiced my support for the Bluffs. The only few questions that I had were traffic-related questions. Now, the third is too long to explain here. I know that email came from Rose Hoffman's email, but I don't believe that she's the one that typed it, because I shook her hand at the beginning of that, the end of our conversation about streaming this over YouTube. Now, finally, the shadow government rhetoric is out of hand. I'm a neighbor who cares about the city, and that's it. And I'll close with this. More than 8,000 citizens are counting on all of us to rise above rumor and perform. We won't always get to choose our teammates, but we get to choose how we play the game. My request tonight is pretty simple. Let's stick to the verifiable facts, do our research, and get back to business of serving Willow Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Kelton Gunter with his comments. Thank you. Okay, next we have Kelton Gunter with his comments.
All right, like you said, I'm Kelton Gunter. I'm a Republican precinct chair. I'm not here as part of the Republican Party or anybody besides myself. So, yeah, last Friday, I watched the video of y'all's meeting on the 24th, and I really felt like I needed to do something, and I don't usually do that. But I called the mayor and said, "Hey, can I do the prayer? Can I speak?" And she said, "Yeah, you can do both." I've known Eric, and for several years, I supported him his election. I like him personally. I've known the mayor since she started running. My purpose here is to provide some encouragement, maybe some hope, and to challenge all of us to be better. I believe that every one of you and every person in this room has the best intentions. You wouldn't be here if you didn't. And I think that if you lined everybody in the state of Texas up in a line by their beliefs on God, government, liberty, and freedom, we would all be at the same end of the line. Everyone in this room would be at the same end of the line. And as someone that's, you know, in the Republican Party, I hate the division in the Republican Party. I hate the acrimony in it. The other side is unified against us, and they love it. I believe that everything is better when we love each other, respect each other, and treat each other in the way we want to be treated. Are we loving each other? Christ said, "A new commandment I give to you, that you love one another, as I have loved you." He had, then he, I can't remember if it was before or after, he watched the disciples speak. He watched Judas Iscariot's speech, who was gonna betray him to death. He watched Peter's speech, who was gonna just deny he ever knew him. But he did it anyway. And then he went to the cross, and he's asking us to take up our cross daily and follow him. He's asking us to do the little things and to do the big things. And I challenge all of us, myself included, every day to do that. So Paul said, "Make my joy complete by being of the same mind, maintaining the same love, united in spirit, intent on one purpose. Do nothing from selfishness or empty conceit, but with humility of mind, regard one another more important than ourselves." Are we being humble? I'm not most of the time, but I try. Are we regarding one another as more important than ourselves? Are we acting out of love for one another? What does this even mean? We have serious disagreements over serious issues. You know, beyond that, some of us don't even like each other most of the time. I like all of y'all. The first thing about love is being patient. Are we being patient with each other? Are we being patient with our new council members, our new mayor? Are we being patient with staff? Are we being patient with the public? Okay. Everyone wants to be shown love and respect. It is how we respond when we are not shown love and respect, when we think we deserve it that matters. Love is not arrogant. It doesn't seek its own. We are trying to see th-- are we trying to see things from the other person's perspective? Most of the time, I can't. Or are we trying to win the argument, or are we trying to win the person? Love is not provoked and does not take into account a wrong sufferer. This is where I check out. I throw up my hands and said, "But you don't know what they did to me. But I don't know what I did to them either." Are we keeping in account of wrong suffered? Are we telling everyone we meet what that person did to me? I mean, don't they know who I am and what I do here? Love bears all things, believes all things, and hopes all things, and endures all things. I believe this city has had a great past. I think it's got a greater future. The journey will be much more enjoyable if we love each other, respect each other, and treat everyone the way we want to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have Gene Martin.
That's a hard act to follow. Thank you, Kelton. I'm Gene Martin. I've been a resident of Willow Park since 1987. For shorter periods, I was a resident of that seat for two years. I was a resident of that seat for eight years. I was a resident of that seat for four years. I may have a slightly different perspective on this than anybody in the room. So, Madam Mayor and Councilman, the message I'm about to deliver brings me no joy. On September 24th, at approximately 6:22 PM, I was appalled to witness as Willow Park Councilman Place One launched an aggressive assault on the Texas Open Meeting Act. Directing no less than seven questions at the Willow Park mayor, Place One relentlessly provoked and attempted to coerce the mayor into a debate on a subject not on the meeting agenda. Did the community news, a champion to defend the Toma, report on this violation? Nope. The community news reported that the mayor got angry. What city business did Place One consider so important that his assault was necessary? Mostly, Place One reviewed the legal difficulties of a Willow Park resident. Place One built a picture of this resident as a thief and a con man. Quoting words from Place One, this person, according to the court records, stole or conned between $30,000 and $150,000 from someone. And the court ordered him to pay the money back. And the available information indicates that no money had been paid back to the victim. End of quotes. However, the evidence shows that the alleged thief and con man had indeed made complete and full restitution nearly two years ago for a charge stemming from a contract dispute. Airing the legal issues of a citizen is hardly city business. Airing a citizen's legal issues incorrectly is abusive. But what motive drove this false scenario? It appears that Place One established this scenario specifically to be able to say that the mayor's campaign, and again, I quote, "could have very well been funded with stolen money from an innocent person in Parker County." Because of Place One's polished presentation, the fact that many people believe this fabrication is verified by social media posts. Will the truth be advertised as effectively as Place One's initial diatribe? I hope so. Sadly, Place One is a man I previously trusted, a man I supported, and displayed his campaign sign in my yard. Now, when Place One speaks, I will forever have to ask, "Is he speaking the truth?" And when he offers a proposition, I will have to ask, "What is his real agenda?" The community news reported that the mayor got angry. I'm angry. Where is the righteous indignation from the other gentlemen on this council? What action will you gentlemen take to demonstrate that you do not condone this behavior? What action can be taken to remedy I'm not gonna say this one, but is the claim's pursuit of transparency universal? Will Place One share the list of names from Alito and other Parker County cities that comprise the shadow government that drives him? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Gene. And the last one on here, we have is Judge Roy Kerbin.
I have a list of items I could talk about here. I'm still incensed about last week. I can't believe it. And I just would say to Spencer, if I had a good attorney out of here, I would be honored to say this. No legal advice, just an opinion. I would say that I could talk about the fallacy of distraction that I see going on, and I saw that evening, creation of a straw man, attack the straw man that has nothing to do with the mayor, and make people believe that the mayor was involved. That is disgusting and childish. And while he was doing that, you were all smiling. You were all sitting there smiling. You had a good time. I watched every one of you smile. You had a great time. I looked at professionally prepared pie chart. I don't think he did that. Someone else did. And the pie chart was a lie. It was a lie. What else was there? But you smiled. This is like looking at a high school gym full of high school boys, not men. Maybe that's because most of you were appointed. You were not elected. You didn't go through the election process, spend the time to meet the citizens, walk the streets, call people and talk to them. You just showed up and somebody got you in. Or maybe you had a race where the opponent got so sick you couldn't run. Or maybe you had a race and no one showed up because the public was too discouraged to show up. This is truly amazing. In all my years involved in politics, from high school on, campaigning for Barry Goldwater, I have never seen anything like this. Ever. The last time we met, I came up here and I made requests, four requests from two of you guys, on statements you made about sexual harassment and the use of religion. I did not see that on tonight's agenda, and I want to see it. And until I see it, every time we come here, until it's on the agenda, and each one of you address that, I'm gonna do it again. Except each time, I'm gonna cite more cases than just the Supreme Court and the state case. I will cite them, and you will sit there and listen to them, until you take some action on this. I'm just a citizen. I'm not elected officially. I was for many years, but I'm not now. And I am appalled by what I'm seeing. This is a room full of angry people. This is a room full of people who believed in the American system, and you're proving it doesn't work, at least here in Willow Park. Now, I want to know who's pulling your strings. There's something else going on here. I don't have proof on it, but we're looking for proof. We're looking for evidence. The world of courts, the worlds of politics move on evidence and proof and reality, not lies. But I still wonder. I wonder who's doing all this. It's really interesting to watch. All those years on the bench, I watched lawyers. I watched the lawyers. I watched the people on trial. And you can learn a lot just by being quiet and watching. All these people here are watching. They've all seen something. You've got to answer the questions. You've got to be fair. And I know when you go back into executive meetings, there's no doubt in my mind that you're harder on the mayor there than when she's out here, if you can believe that. They're harder on her back there when the people don't see it, because they can get away with it. All right, just keep it up. Just keep it up. The city of Willow Park is watching you, and all of these people here are talking to their neighbors. They're all talking to the neighbors. And you can sit there, you have that nice stoic look, that dead look in your eyes, but you better know it's coming. Fallacy of distraction, arguments that sidestep the subject, straw man arguing, build a straw man and attack, associated with someone else. Casey, being a school student.
Thank you. All right, now we're going on to... Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a number on there? Let me...
I did. My name is Kenny.
Are you on 10 or not? I'm sorry. You're on number 10, or you want to do this now?
Uh, I'd like to do this.
Honored council members, Mayor Palmer.
Move it up close so we can hear you.
You bet. Honored members, Mayor Palmer. My name is Paul Kenny. I live at 509 Deer Pond, and I had three topics, so I just sent them out of the way. The first is that, doing some research, it looks like we made debt obligations last year of $8 million, and the year before, we made debt obligation of $8 million, and the year before, another $8 million. And so I'm having trouble, but I did have trouble totaling up our total debt. I'm not sure if it's 63 million or 66 million, but I'm thinking it's way too much, and we need a balanced budget or some way to fix this. I have the numbers for what the taxpayers of each of the cities in our, each of the 5,000-plus member cities, county have to pay annually, and ours is way up there. The second one I had was, I heard Councilmember Contreras had some words last week. I did not hear them. I'm not here to address them, except to say that someone called them aggressive. But I'm just asking for decorum and respect. And then the second one was, it can get so bad that Mayor Moss wants to be evaded from a city meeting. Liked my wife as an insurance agent, but not as a citizen, and Mayor Moss, he'd like to shoot my wife, and his wife would like to shoot my wife. That's how bad it can get. We gotta stop it. As to number 10, I find maybe two typos or two inconsistencies. In Agenda 1 and 3, essentially, let me go to 3 first. A council member may remove an item from the consent agenda for separate consideration, but apparently the mayor cannot remove an item from the consent agenda for separate consideration, even though these items are previously discussed. So she's in the same vote, but apparently doesn't get that permission. The other one is, if a member puts an item on the agenda, but it can't go in immediately, I believe the city manager has a requirement put in within the next two meetings, unless the council agrees. I don't understand why the mayor doesn't get a say in that. So maybe these are typos, maybe they're inconsistencies, but it could be a slack. I don't know. That's all I had, folks. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on. Number 1. The city manager separation details. I've had citizens ask about the separation agreement, so I wanted to be sure and provide those details. The city agreed to pay a total of $143,000, and our Texas Municipal League Insurance agreed to pay an additional $32,000 for a total of $175,000. The city manager was not required to sign a non-disclosure agreement. The city manager waived all claims against the city and the mayor, both in my official capacity and personally. The city and the mayor did not waive all future claims against the city manager. Okay, next, for item 2, I have a proclamation tonight honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I'm gonna read the proclamation. Okay, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the crime as domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, economic control and/or ab-- control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and society barriers and are supports by society, societal, sorry, I'm saying that wrong, indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas in Parker County, since 1995, Freedom House, their staff, volunteers, and board members directly confront this local crisis with help from all law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, the clergy, and other concerned citizens who are working together to aid in the effort to end domestic violence in our community. And whereas survivors of domestic violence themselves had been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, I do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Willow Park, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs to work toward eradicating domestic violence, proving, improving victim safety, and holding per... Say it again? Per...how you say it? Say it.
Perpetrator.
There you go. That, sorry. Of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of Willow Park, Texas, to be affixed this 14th day of October 2025. I invite, I would like to invite Carol Sutton of the Freedom House to come forward to receive this recognition, and Sean's going to come up with me. Okay, number 3, consent agenda for item 3. We have city council meetings provided for July 28 as corrected, September 9, September 23, and September 24. Dana advised me that we're pulling that to make some questions, update what actually happened.
Yes, ma'am. If you would please consider taking that section of minutes off of the consent agenda and postpone those until the next meeting so that we can get those complete.
Absolutely.
Okay. So councilors, are there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes for July 28, 2025. Correction, September 9, 2025, September 23, and postponed the September 24 meeting minutes for the next council meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, number 4, our regular agenda items, discussion and action. Representative from Encore to address tree trimming issues in Willow Park. I sponsored this, I asked for the speaker. Due to negative feedback I received from residents, I have asked Encore to attend tonight's meeting to address these concerns. Would Rick Beal, Beal, please come forward?
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. A couple of years ago, actually last year in 2024, the state legislature approved system resiliency plans. They passed it through legislature and through the Public Utilities Commission of Texas. Encore was proud to submit and have approved the first system resiliency plan in November of last year. We're making unprecedented investments in our infrastructure, trying to harden the grid. So a lot of the tree trimming that you're seeing here, which is the first thing that you asked about, right?
Right.
The tree trimming, there's about $3 billion being invested in hardening our grid. So it could be with wildfire mitigation, that is, some of the things that are going on here. They could be doing pole replacements, cross arm replacements, and even upgrading and adding automation to try to make the power come back on quicker, basically, is what it boils down to. I have a quick slide here, which I can't show you, but I can tell you, of just investment in the city of Willow Park that we've been doing. They've assessed and hardened more than 1,500 poles, and that's about 77% complete. We've expanded the vegetation management. Now, what's a little bit different, or is different, with what we've done traditionally in vegetation management? These areas that hadn't just been traditionally cleared about 10, 10 feet to get the clearance away from the line. We have taken it to the ground because they have to have access to get in there, and it is with the 10-foot easement to go in there and replace poles, cross arms, anything like that, to harden the grid. So any pole that was 30 years or older, we've replaced that with a newer pole. They've been doing inspections. If a pole looked like it needed to be replaced, that's the main reason for taking the trees down. We do have arborists on site. I believe we met with you, Madam Mayor, and spoke with a customer, and just spoke to them about their concerns. The arborist is there to make sure that that tree is salvageable, that we can do everything we can to not take too much or too little off of that. We've done over a mile of underground segment, replacing equipment vulnerable to extreme weather conditions for our underground facilities, and there's continued optimization of our distribution facilities. So basically what that is, they can put automated equipment up in the air to where it detects if there's a partial outage, and it can try to repair that outage to lessen the outage time without, without rolling trucks or anything like that out there. Do y'all have any specific questions in regard to our system resiliency plan?
I said one. You said 10-foot easement, is that from each side of the pole, so 20-foot spread?
It would be five. So the average cross arm, and some of them are different, sometimes you use the smaller cross arms there, but we have to be able to work on each side of it, so it's an eight-foot cross arm, and they figure just enough room on each side. Some easements are bigger than that, it just depends on where you're at, but that is the standard as to what they're clearing out there. Now, with the fire mitigation, there is some where they, we've been wrapping the poles with flame retardant to try to have less problems there and mitigate some of those issues, and they will do some ground clearance around there if they're not, they may not be doing the whole widening all the way down, but they will do clearance around that pole for fire mitigation.
Thanks, Rick.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd say you spoke a lot on, obviously, the upgrades, the updates, and I don't doubt that Encore is looking to improve everything else areas. What are some steps that residents can take if they feel their issues, like things that were brought up last time would be unright, unlawful use or access of the property, not using the provided easements, or if they feel that something is, like you've taken too much from this area, it goes beyond the bounds. What are some of the avenues our citizens can take when maybe they feel like abuses have taken place, and we can get a set of eyes from Encore on it as well?
Sure. They can contact Encore through our contact center. They can, and they will direct them to the correct person. If they feel like there was damage done, we have a claim center. They can go to encore.com and file a claim, and we can start the process on there. So if there were ruts in their yard, or if there was something damaged, say maybe a culvert was smashed, then they could file a claim and go to encore.com. There's a search bar right there, just type in claims, and it'll go through a portal. I would say that's the most, that's the best way to do it because it's putting them into a tracking system, and you know you're going to get a number, a confirmation number. That way you can track your claim.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, you may know this, having spoken with them, but is there a, do we have a city rep that we can also use to...
Yes, thank you. I am your city rep.
I thought so, I just wanted to...
I'm your new area manager. We have certain cities, and what we do is we will work with municipalities, we'll work with the emergency management and chambers of commerce. We are your liaison, so we can definitely take care of that.
Okay, appreciate it.
You bet.
Hey, Rick, I've got a question for you. What is like the standard operating procedure for your arborist to gain access to easements? Like we, we heard from a young lady several weeks ago talking about, she came home, gentlemen were laying in her yard eating lunch, they had opened her gate, they had drove their trucks through her gate to her back fence, parked those trucks, things like that. Like what is the process of that? Like is that, I mean, obviously, they should be contacting the resident...
Absolutely. They should be contacting the homeowner. Sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
They should be contacting the homeowner. We're trying to improve that. That's one of the things that I was pushing, especially after I met with the mayor, is to make sure our communication is better. This is a new program, but Encore is not new to this business, right? So we, we're not going to be perfect all the time, but that's not an excuse. We need to make sure that we're sending out, we're sending out phone calls, door knockers, text messages. What I would, what I would suggest is, if you are a ratepayer for Encore, sign up for my Encore Alerts. It's going to send you text messages if there's an outage, if there's, if we're going to be needing to be in your area, things like that. But if they do have a concern, we absolutely want to address those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You bet.
So as our new rep here in the city...
Yes, sir.
I would think, or I would expect, that if we are having major projects of this magnitude, that this would be at least communicated with the city, and there would be a coordinated communication effort between Encore and the city.
Absolutely, and I'm glad you brought that up because one thing I've asked our communications team to do, we want to have some things that you can share on your city website that are going to let these, and they are working on those, I think they're about complete, that'll be specific to the town that we're working in, to let them know the areas that we're going to be, look for these people that are going to be in the area and working. We don't have them yet, but it should be pretty soon. The communications department's also going to make sure we're putting out stuff on Encore as well, but we want you to be able to have something you can share on that. Now, in regard to this, because there's been so much going so fast, they are pushing, the PUCs giving us deadlines to push this system resiliency plan work, some of it has gone to where they've started working before we've been able to notify. That's one thing we're working to rectify, and we want to make sure you know proactively rather than reactively like happened here.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Rick. So I think most of us understand the need for vegetative maintenance, but the crews Encore hired for this effort went to the extreme. The crews did not simply trim the trees, as we just talked about and looked at, by 10 feet away from the power lines, but in many cases, the trees were cut down to the ground. Hundred-year-old pecans and oaks were chopped down. That was a concern. That's what I went and looked at when I got those calls. So our neighborhoods have had tree trimming in the past, but never to this experience, extreme, especially along some of the creek areas. Also, equipment was not confined to the easement. I had many people tell me the contractors drove and parked their cherry pickers and trucks on their private property. So how are you going to get out the word? I want to take the work off of our city staff, and that's one thing we talked about, is to have Encore take those complaints because y'all can actually do something with them.
Absolutely.
And we don't need our staff taking time out that they can't resolve it, that you can resolve. So how are you getting the word out for us all to know how to contact you? I do, but everyone else?
The encore.com where they can file a claim onsite. That is, that is the main way. That's the best way. Unless they approach us, we don't know who they are. I mean, it would be a random, just broad cast out, and I don't know that we can do that. But I know that if they do have a complaint, we're more than happy to take care of and look at each and every one of them.
Okay. So the city, they have the site, so if anyone calls them, they just send them to the site to speak with y'all, right?
To encore.com and just type in claims, and there is a, trying to think of the word to explain it, it's, it's going to, it's going to put it all in one system, and that's how they track it. They'll get a number to know what their claim is, and someone will contact them, they'll have a phone number to talk to a person about it.
Okay. Hold a second.
Andy, can we take questions from you? Yes.
Okay, great, we can take questions. So you want to come up and speak so we can hear you?
I'll try to keep it brief. My name is Scott Carron of Squaw Creek. I know you've got a tough job. I dealt with you in Kansas City, but Kansas City, right? There are easements, things are pretty much bombproof. So if you're thinking about suing them, give it up because you're not going to win. But what you do need to know is that nobody from Lewis Tree contacted anybody on Squaw Creek before we started cutting. I caught the guy outside trying to pull, start the chainsaw, and I said, hey, what's going on? No English. So I get it, but he had to put his hefe on the phone, marginal English, and I just said, hey, we're going to have to wait until I get Encore, and they said, we're with Encore. We're going to decide if the truck, and you're not with Encore, you got to seriously use the cord. So I told them to leave. They did. Your vegetation guys were nice. I talked to them ad nauseam. They were cooperative. You guys need to not cut people's stuff long before you can talk to them. This is Texas. Remember that, because if I come home and there's strange people in my backyard, they're probably going to call him or, or him. So just letting you know, may some people know who I am, some don't. I don't like strangers in my backyard, I don't know who they are. I have dogs. You guys need to figure that out. You also have a giant pile of rocks in my garden from the pole being left, and I've asked twice when they're coming to get them. I'm the one with thousands of people. But you guys invoke rural clear, clearing rules. You invoke rural clearing, I have experience in this, in a city with half a million dollar houses. You probably have to rethink that strategy. Because they were telling us it's 10 foot from the pole, and it's five foot. It's seven foot from the lines. You guys don't know the bottom line. It's a data line. That's a data line.
The very bottom is communication, yes. We have, depending on what line is...
Do you invoke, do you invoke these on the data line?
We don't, we're not trying for the data lines.
Okay.
We will have a...
I know you, I know you've got a hard job, I'm grateful that you came here.
Sure.
I'm not going to get jerked to you. You could make my wife mad.
Oops. Uh-oh.
I just let you know, I got rules. You make my wife and my daughter cry, first thing, good problem. We're not there yet. I appreciate your time, thank you. I know you've got a hard...
Yeah, we're here to help, and just in general, if you do have an issue, please let us know. These are contractors, the system isn't perfect, we're demanding that. We're working to rectify that to make sure people are getting notified. We have a whole group of people working to get this information out ahead of time. We don't want you to find somebody in your backyard and be like, I realize this is Texas, I've been warned, warned and raped here. But we do want you to know that we are here to help if you have a claim issue, we want to make sure that we can take care of it.
I'm also aware, they just passed legislation, it is a crime to interfere with linemen doing line work. Everybody needs to know that. If you've got linemen out there doing line work, don't fool with them. Don't fool with them.
And it's dangerous if they're working, because they're working hard, we'll see time. But you do have the ability to go talk to somebody and say, hey, are we sure we know what's going on?
That's a frustration.
Yes, sir. And we appreciate your, absolutely. And if anybody has anything, once I'm done here, if you want to step out, I'm more happy to take your information and see what we can do to fix that.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, for coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank y'all for having me.
Appreciate it.
And if you need anything in the future, I think a lot of y'all have my contact information.
We have a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back to the left.
I was just trying to meet you. Hi, Mayor called and specifically asked me to attend the meeting, so I'd rather have it before I'm in the back, but I'm happy to do that, too. I came a few weeks ago, I believe on whose spot was probably a recanting. So I've done everything that you said, you submitted a claim in July, I was emailing with Michael, I emailed city staff, my frustrations were as much with the city of Willow Park as they were with Encore, because I know that they can call you or Michael back then to get some help, and that was never done either. But there's still been no response from Encore on that claim, but I submitted back in July. We have to get one single communication from Encore.
Right, that's all we have to do.
Yeah, so we'll definitely link up later, but I also want this open forum on the record, and not just us in the back, because Mayor did totally apologize on my evening here. This is a submission. With that being said, thank you for clarifying some of that. There, the subcontractors that have come out, it's not just the tree trimming, it is the destruction that came from line trucks from Placca specifically, ruined most of our driveway, potentially ruined some of the lines, it's not just the tree trimming. We've had no tree trimming. Our property is all been a full cut down to the bottom. A lot of those stumps are still there.
Can somebody give me your number on something?
I don't know.
They've been trying, if you...
I've been talking to a lot of people from the...
They've been trying, I'm not saying I want an email, but we're trying to get it fixed up. If this is the same one, this is...
Okay, so I just, you know, I appreciate you coming and speaking. I know this is not very fun, and I know it's...
This is, I'm here, I'm here.
But just in transparency, communication, and some follow-up, it shouldn't be this hard to try to get in contact with someone.
I agree, let's just fix that.
Thank you for coming. Have a good weekend.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Based on the experience by, by some of the residents where, you know, the...
Based on the experience by, by some of the residents where, you know, the clear cut of the, of the trees, damage to property, what's going to be done with all the contractors to ensure that this goes away?
Well, there's definitely already been those conversations that are happening, and that goes back in our communication line, that we're trying to be way more proactive. And I realize that we've got a lot of work to get done in a short amount of time, so people are trying to get things done. And I appreciate that we're, we're getting those things done, but we also want to make sure that we're being ordered respectful to our stakeholders, to our, to our ratepayers. We want to make sure you can take care of it. Now, in regard, in regard to the, to clear cutting, the art cutting it down, the stumps and they have to do that to be able to access, to able to place poles, do all those things, to safely do it. That's never a good look. I know that people don't want that, but they're trying to do it. I did talk to our arborists, that we do have arborists onsite, so if, if you do see those people out there, if you request an arborist, come to you, and they will talk to you about your tree. We have three or four certified arborists just on these crews that are out here, because I want to focus on to make sure that those guys are out there, asking y'all. What was that part of your question?
I was just, I was just curious what's proactively being done with the contractor or subcontractor to ensure that, that the damage and practices, you know, don't continue the way they have in certain circumstances.
Sure, yeah. And we are, we are addressing contractors. We've got a whole crew that is dealing just with the system residency plan. What I will say is positive news for you is that you are one of the first areas that are getting taken care of on the system residency plan, so it should provide normal liability. I'm not here to start by your powers and everything, but again, because, because that can happen. This is Texas, there's a lot of storms. But the good news is, is your area is one of the first areas to receive a lot of this money, and $3 billion over the next three years, and it's going to continue even after that. So, we want to make sure we're getting word out to everybody who understands what we're doing and why we're doing it, and why we're there as well. So, if you have a claim, we want to make sure we take care of it. Yes, sir. 221 Vista, you got that, a bunch of stuff.
Some of this is your In Squaw Creek, where I think the bear was, there's a ton of, like, debris, mislnder. You guys created metal screws, bolts this long for the cross members. They need to go back and fix all that up, that board used. That arborist gets 500 yards long.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, you guys need to take care of that.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback. I think we're having to have the conversation. Obviously, we don't want to be here to discuss this, but if we don't know, I appreciate you, and I want to make sure that you know this. Anyone else?
I've had a terrible experience with Plaska, and I appreciate, I wish I knew you were on the problem folder, because I had a phone. I've been contacted by a third-party litigator that's booking the tailspin, trying to put it back on me to tell them what they did wrong, rather than, you know, they've admitted, they've apologized, and I hear, I'm inside, I'm inside, cleaning it myself. They had high-grade material equipment on the driveway and tore up my property, and it's, it's disappointing. So, I want to get your card. I'll give you the phone.
Sure. I, I don't work in the claims department. I must have sent it to them. They're going to do, but I can make sure you get their contact from the claims department, so they can do their work and make sure this conversation's done.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item five. Jean Martin is going to provide us with a status report on the Home Rule Commission. Please step forward with your report. There you are.
May I?
Yes, you may.
You can get this in your package. Okay. So, we, I'm not going to read this whole report, because I've got some other comments. A couple of things I want to note, though. We've had four working meetings since the formative meeting, and I think in those four meetings, we've gotten a lot done. We have a draft total charter that got actually posted on the Home Rule Charter portion, in case people aren't really sure where that is. Go on the homepage of the city, and you scroll down below the first bar, there's like four windows across. And the Home Rule Charter information is the second window from the left. There's 10 articles in the charter. The commission so far has only actually discussed five of them. One, two, three, five, and nine. We didn't go in sequence. And I'll point out that general provisions, Article Nine talks about, one concept in there is a board of ethics, which I want everybody to become familiar with. The other articles in the posted version online, the text in all of those articles is supposed to have a gray background. Article Six on initiative referendum and recall, and Article Ten on transitional pow, transitional provisions did not get the gray background, but they haven't been reviewed either. Now, why is that important? It's because we have scheduled two town hall meetings. And for the people who are potentially looking online, who haven't seen that information, the next town hall meeting will be at the Willow Park Baptist Church Thursday. That's two days from now, okay, at 6:30 PM. I want as many people as are interested in this to come out. We will discuss any part of the charter that they want to talk about, because I'm looking for feedback from the citizens. Okay? Do you have any questions for me? Okay. A couple of notes that I wanted to, to share. And one example, I got feedback from one citizen who said, I favor a strong mayor. And I want you to be aware of the response I sent that person. My response to him was, I would like to see a reasonable balance of power among the mayor, council, and professional city manager. However, the mayor is totally responsible to manage emergencies and requires the respect and support to be prepared to do so. The mayor is the spokesperson for the city, and the mayor presides over all city council meetings. Anyway, I just thought you might appreciate that as a concept, rather than, I want a strong mayor, I want a strong city manager. We need a balance. That's what we need. Okay? Well, I will mention that in the 40 years of history that I'm fairly intimate with in Willow Park, we have been very blessed to never once have to invoke emergency powers. Isn't that great?
Mm-hmm.
But we don't buy, we, we all buy insurance for things that we've never experienced also. Okay, that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Okay. Thursday night. Thank you. Okay. So, for item six, we are actually, the staff has pulled this for future. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so six has been pulled. Number seven, discussion and action for the year 2025, 2026 holiday schedule. So, Tony, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed schedule for the holiday schedule for the year for 2526, this year 2526. Staff's providing two proposed schedules for the city council to consider. The first is as we've always had it, and that is for having the Veterans Day and for Juneteenth actually off. And then Veterans Day is on Monday, uh, it's actually on Tuesday, but we celebrate it on Monday. Tuesday is a council meeting day. So, to offset that, since Christmas and New Year's is on, the Eves are on Wednesday and Thursday. Friday after will be a skeleton crew anyway, so we've requested that option to be, as opposed to taking those two holidays, that we just take the Friday after and do a five-day for staff, because we'll have just a few people here on Friday anyway, because everybody wants to take that day off. So, those two are for your consideration. Obviously, staff prefers number two, so whatever you decide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, personally, I feel Veterans Day is an important holiday to keep, and why don't we just provide the two additional days to cover the Fridays? So, after Christmas and New Year's, and give them the Fridays off. Do we have a motion on that to give them the two extra days?
I'll make a motion that we do exactly what she just said.
Would you like to have us Monday off or actual day of Tuesday? I think Monday is the observance, but Tuesday is our council day. Is it okay for us to take Monday the 10th, or is it the actual day? I don't know if anybody working for bankers.
Yeah. I think, like you said, if we're going to have a skeleton crew, we might as well take it off.
Okay, for the Monday for veterans.
Right.
So, I'll
To make it a long weekend, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, we had a recommended motion. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, days off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we apply that to county employees too?
No.
Go on, go on.
We cannot.
May I ask a question just for clarifications?
Mm-hmm.
Will our city council meeting still be on the 11th Veterans Day?
I don't think we should.
Or November?
I don't think so. Do we need to vote on that? Go ahead and do that, if it'll pay.
It's not on the agenda.
Wait for it. Let's, let's
Okay.
So, we would need to
You're out anywhere.
Okay. So, do you want to wait on that one? Put it on the agenda?
For the next meeting, whatever.
Next thing we have. That'd be great. Yes?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just clarifying.
Okay. So, for item eight, we have discussion action to consider approval of a resolution to submit candidate director nominations for Parker County Appraisal District for terms expiring December 31st, 2025. And I think Dina's doing this one, but we had Councilman Gilliland. Did you check to see if these men are still listed that are interested in serving?
The only one I could, I could confirm was Jerry Durant.
And he wants to stay on?
That's two parties. I didn't talk to him directly, but I talked to some of his staff, yes.
And do you know how long he's served?
I don't.
I don't either.
He serves on so many committees throughout the county. He's, he spreads his time thin, but he does a great job.
Okay. So, those two still on again then?
I think so, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, maybe next year, we can put a call out and see if anyone in Willow Park residents are interested in serving on the CAD board, do you think?
I'm all for it.
Okay. So, council, is there a motion to have the two serving now continue on? Is there a motion for that?
Make a motion that we continue on with the two that are already on the, on the board to fill out the next term.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Do we need to decide how the votes are?
No. That, so what will happen is this resolution will get sent to them tomorrow morning, and they will then furnish us ballots at the end of October that we have until December. So, whatever meeting falls in that range, that we can put that on the agenda. And that would be when you would actually vote, and you could apply your voting, you have 22 votes for the city of Willow Park, so you can split it 20 and 2, 22 for just one, because the ballot will determine who's actually going to be appointed, kind of thing.
They split them.
We, we will have time, yes.
Right. Just wanted to clarify ahead of this.
Yes.
So, do we have all in favor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to nine. For our item nine, Councilman Eric Contreras wants to discuss the repeated request of the Willow Park residence name who created the request for qualification document for legal services dated May 2025. I'll begin with comments to provide my opinion that this item is a complete waste of time. Anyone can find an RFQ template online used by other cities across Texas, just like most other documents used for the city's business. Reinventing the wheel is unnecessary. I proved up and provided RFQ to the council, because nobody else had it to give to me, as is usually the case, but when I request items for the agenda. It was clear that I was on my own, and the council's request to staff to provide RFQ never produced anything. So, if you want to keep beating the dead horse, it is certainly your option to do so, but I'm done discussing this matter when we have municipal attorney sitting right here with us. I went on and found the template, cities dripping string springs, Austin, Clear Lake shores, Deer Park, all those cities use that. And it's, it sounds like there were like three dates that weren't updated of the 15. So, Eric, you want to make comments that you need to make before we move on to the next agenda item?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It's been, from my account, 78 days since this, and we haven't gotten any information, and I believe there's several FOIA requests out there regarding it, and I didn't know if you had responded to any.
You want to repeat that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I believe this has been outs for about 78 days, and I believe there have been several FOIA requests regarding it, and I do not know if those FOIA requests have been answered.
I, I don't, I don't know if they have or have not.
You're not in the loop on that one?
No, we, we have a separate division that handles those, and I'm, I don't know if they have or have not. I'd have to talk to them, so I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I can, I can try to find out.
Does a FOIA request need to be answered?
So, if a person makes a, an open record request to the city, we have an obligation to determine if there's responsive documentation and provide that, if, if it's responsive or ask for an attorney general's opinion, if there's potentially privileged information within it. So, yes, it, people can't ask questions necessarily. They seek documents. And if they're responsive documents, we have an obligation to respond.
Okay. So, I was asked by our tech support, he had asked for my texts on my city device, and he sent me an email, and I answered him. So, that is taken care of on my side.
Thank you.
Okay. So, are we ready to move on to 10? Okay, for item 10, council member Eric Contreras wants to discuss an act to amend the ordinance 802-19, section 1.02.035m, to provide the city administrator control of the city council agenda, including supplements and amendments. What does this item actually mean? I've been asked that. If approved, this item would remove the mayor from control of the city council agenda, including agenda supplements and agenda amendments. Why did Eric Contreras request this item? In his own words, Eric Contreras claimed that there are residents working with the mayor, and he called these citizens a shadow government. What does the city's online code currently require to place an item on the agenda?
Parliamentary inquiry.
Who are you asking?
I think he's asking me.
Our attorney.
What, what are you asking?
Uh, we have really deviated off from the
Agenda item.
The agenda item.
I think we're talking specifically about it, are we?
I've never said anything about a shadow government on an agenda. So, do we need to get this back?
It was council comments. Was it night? Wasn't it? Andy?
Uh, I wasn't, I wasn't present at that.
You saw the video?
I think I did. She, I think she's making introductory comments for this agenda item.
Right.
And, and you're welcome to respond to those, but I think
Yeah, we're not debating right now.
We, we should talk about the substance of the ordinance and what it does or doesn't do.
Right. Okay. So, section 1.03.035, placement of the agenda, items on the agenda, the mayor and the city council members may verbally request an item to be placed on the agenda. Such properly requested items shall be placed on the agenda of the city, next city meeting. What does the governance policy approved back in late 2019 state about the agenda? Section 1.03.035m agenda, the mayor and/or Section 1.03.035M, agenda, the mayor and/or city administrator shall set the agenda. How does the amendment requested by Eric Contreras change our code? It removes the mayor as a designee of the city administrator and adds control over supplements and amendments to the agenda to the city administrator or designee. Mayors don't have unilateral power to control the agenda, but mayors are required to give the governing body any information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure that relates to improving the finances, the police, health, security, cleanliness, comfort, ornament, or good government of the municipality. This is under the Local Government Code, section 22.042, powers and duties of the mayor. So for Andy, did anyone approve of the ordinance 82-19, or was it approved simply given an ordinance governance policy? Can you explain how the city government policy aligns with my required responsibilities in chapter 22 and the Local Government Code? Help us with that.
I can, I can talk about the con, if you're asking about the context of this particular agenda item versus the statutory powers of a, of a mayor in a general law A, so happy to talk about that.
Okay.
So they're, they're two different things. So in the Local Government Code, there are, Willow Park right now is a general law A municipality, so you have powers that are conferred by statute as opposed to what you're looking at home rule, which is you're gonna have your own constitution, your own power of self-government. So chapter 22 provides certain powers to the various officers in a general law A municipality, mayor's obviously one of those officers. And so there are certain duties and responsibilities that are provided to the mayor, and she listed some of them. For example, providing information, making recommendations to the governing body for improving finances, police, good government of the municipality, administering O's, performing duties that the council assigns her to perform. So this ordinance is not addressed in chapter 22, it is separate and apart from that. So chapter 22 doesn't, doesn't specify who has the control of setting agendas for Willow Park or Type A municipality. This ordinance that was passed in 2019 does. So that ordinance currently says it's the mayor and city manager, and/or city manager that controls the agenda. And so this agenda item seeks to amend the current ordinance by saying only the city manager has control of the agenda. So there, there could, the statute and this ordinance are compatible in the law.
So if it wasn't codified, why is it a good law, and now you're going to do something about it? And I think that back in the meetings in the beginning, Councilman Leah actually brought this up and said, we need to, we need to work on this and finish this and codify it. Now you're gonna say, I think when you and I talked today and then you sent an email, it has not been codified. And so now you're gonna work on that. And do you have any other cities that you work with or you know of that have removed the mayor from the agenda like this? Any other city?
Two different, there's two different issues you just spoke of. So one about codification. So codification does not affect the effectiveness or legality of an ordinance. So if the city council, this city council tonight passes an ordinance, it is, and it's signed, and it's attested to, it's law, it becomes the law of the city. Whether it's published by a publishing company is not the rel, not the standard and not relevant. It is helpful for the public to know about the laws through codification, but not all cities codify their laws. Some do, some don't. Your city has a particular publisher that does codify your laws. We found this, the ordinance out as we were going through the agenda for this meeting, and this, this ordinance has not been codified. It doesn't mean that it's not legal, doesn't mean it's not effective. It is legal, and it is effective, it's just not codified. So when we found out it wasn't codified, then we put that process in place right now. So that's, that's the first issue. The second issue, the mayor asked me today from our clients, do we have any clients, and we represent home rule cities and general law cities, do we have any clients that I, that I know of where the mayor's not part of the agenda process? I can't think of one. The mayor normally is part of the agenda process, and usually it is in consultation with the city manager, but it doesn't have to be that way, so.
Okay, so, yeah, I have Jeanette, I, yes, Jeanette has signed up to talk about this item, I'm sorry. Come on up, Jeanette, sorry.
Okay, I have to digress with one sentence to place one, and I feel your pain. Back in July, I asked for two, I had two items that I, that begged for help from the city council, anything you can do, help me out, and I've heard crickets. So now you get to hear crickets like we've had to hear for a long time, and it's frustrating, so I, I hear, I feel your pain. But I'm here tonight, thank you by the way, and good evening to all. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about this proposed ordinance change, and the reason, when I saw it, what really specifically to the attorney caught my eye, was that the ordinance as it stands now also includes the people. There's a way that public can actually place items on our agenda. If, in the new ordinance that I saw by place one put out there to be revised, the people are not included along with mayor. We were all cut out. So it is deeply concerning that this proposed ordinance change, one that would remove the citizen's right to place an item on the city council agenda. Right now, the ordinance clearly states, and I had a little trouble finding it, but I did dig it up off the website, it's quote, "The general public may place an item on the agenda provided that such request be submitted in writing," unquote. The reason it caught my eyes, for five years in Austin, I sat on the state agency and was rules chair, and I worked directly with the Assistant AG of the State of Texas, writing rules and laws and ordinances. So that's the first thing that caught me. The mayor was a given, we all know what's going on there. But when the people are not allowed, that's another story. Your new version strikes, strikes it out completely, people are not involved at all. The entire foundation of the TOMA is transparency. The idea that citizens have not only the right to observe government, to, to participate meaningfully in it, while simultaneously requiring that all governmental actions be taken openly and that no decisions be made in a way that limits public awareness or input. By removing the citizen's right to submit an agenda request in writing, a right that has long existed here in Willow Park, this council would be taking away a step from openness and toward exclusion. This also touches the Texas Local Government Code, section 51.001, which gives municipalities authority to pass ordinances, quote, "for the good government, peace, and order of the municipality," unquote. Silencing or even limiting citizen access to the decision-making process cannot reasonably be considered, quote, "good government." Government by its nature should encourage dialogue, not close it off. Council, the citizens you serve are the major stakeholders in this proposed change in ordinance by Mr. Contreras, and yet the proposed new draft language states, I'm quoting from what was on, online, "The city of Willow Park City Council finds and determines that the revision of this ordinance will be in the best interest of the citizens of Willow Park," unquote. I have to respectfully ask the council, how do you know that? The citizens have not been asked, there's been no vote, no survey, no workshops or outreach whatsoever. No one has asked the major stakeholders in this city, the people of Willow Park, what we think is in our best interest. This council cannot truly claim to act in our best interest without first hearing what we, the citizens, believe that interest to be. Removing public access to the agenda does not protect the public, it protects power. It erodes trust, and once trust is lost, it is extremely hard to regain. If the intent here is efficiency, there are better ways to achieve it that do not sacrifice transparency. Let's be honest, this change does not serve the people, it serves power. It takes away a small but important right, the right to bring our concerns directly to the council's agenda, and it does it quietly, without public stakeholder input. This is not transparency, this is not participation, this is control. This is a slow erosion of citizen stakeholder rights, rights that belong to every citizen of Willow Park, not just the ones sitting on this dais. This is how citizens lose their voice, not all at once, but piece by piece, meeting by meeting, ordinance by ordinance. And I have to say, it is hard not to notice that this push seems to come from a council that does not like our mayor. But our government is not supposed to be about personalities or politics, it's about the people. Don't take away our voice, don't chip away at our rights. I respectfully urge you, keep the ordinance as it is, and let the citizens of Willow Park continue to have a say in their own government. The current ordinance provides a clear and written path for citizen stakeholder participation. Eliminating that process, eliminating that process without public consultation limits transparency and public engagement. If this council insists on violating the citizens' rights here in Willow Park to participation, then I ask you to slow down, table this ordinance, hold a public hearing or workshop to gather stakeholder input. Ask the Willow, the Willow Park citizens what we want before taking away a voice we have always held. That would show respect for both the process and the people you serve, because our democracy does not disappear all at once. It disappears piece by piece, ordinance by ordinance, when citizens are quietly removed from the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, Andy?
Yeah.
Just for a clarification piece of that, I don't see in here on M where we are taking that right away from the citizens.
Yes, that's not, that's not in the ordinance that's, that's in effect right now, that was in a prior ordinance that was codified.
Right, but not in the effective one right now, so.
That's not.
But my comment is, it's on your website. I've got it codified.
Understand, that's why it's codified.
Why is it posted on my website if it's not the law?
It was, it was a law, it was codified, and that's not the current state of the law.
Then why is it on your website?
Perhaps it's a mistake.
I don't know.
That, that, that would need to be, that would need to be changed.
Absolutely.
A lot needs to be cleaned up on that website.
We're working on it. Absolutely.
Yeah, so I will, I will, I've been hearing this since July, and I'm just saying, that's where I got it, I'm not making this up.
But I, I don't ever want to take the right from the people away at all, that's, that's one thing, so.
The mayor, we are the owner. She speaks for us, she's taking it away by taking it away from her. See, that's what you don't understand.
So mayor, I think if people need to speak, they need to be.
Right, so basically, we need to bring it back up front. So Nathan, do you think the mayor should be removed from the agenda process? And if so, what, what would be your reason to take me off?
It wouldn't be necessarily that, with the mayor aspect, it's the fact that we need to figure out who has the final say, like if there are, there are competing voices, which I feel like we probably have been dealing with, with you and the prior city manager, like who has the final say, who has the final authority? Is there a deadline for when these things are due? Once times reach that, nothing can be changed from it. Some of those things, I want to make sure that whatever we set tonight goes into, into codified.
Okay, so are you saying, take the mayor, my rights away?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying we're gonna discuss it right now, because right now we have, I believe it said, the mayor and/or city administrator.
Correct, yes.
So we have an and/or.
Yes, sir.
So do you have, do you have final say? Does the city administrator have a final say? Is there a, I want to be clear that when, whatever comes of this, that we have a, a line of authority. Nobody wants to take any council member or mayor's ability to put anything on, or take your own agenda, agenda items off.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Right, so that was one of the things that was, was mentioned in this, and like, would you, if I put something on there that you didn't like, is you as the, the mayor had the highest authority, could you take mine off? No, we want to make sure that's the case. If I didn't like something that you put on there, I wouldn't speak up to say, take that off, we could discuss it outside of it, but just, once again, establishing the rules of power, the way it, it works, the way our system interacts, the way our, our different department heads and branches work together to come to a person to make that decision at the end. I think that's the main thing I would like to clear up, would be if there, if we remain in this with the mayor and/or.
Right.
City manager, city administrator, whoever that person is, we need, we need a balance, like Mr. Martin spoke about earlier with his vision for home rule, we need a balance of power if we're going to do this.
Right, so I think the difference is, we're trying to work on the dysfunction that we have that's very visible, and everyone comments on this. So basically, when we have a city manager, from my understanding, when we get a city manager, the mayor works with the city manager to be sure no one takes anything off, I definitely agree, and no one has.
Right.
It stays on.
I'm not saying that, that was just one of the.
Right, and so you don't agree to take the mayor off? You want to remove the mayor or not?
If we can, yeah, okay.
Yes or no?
My staff's in a distraction.
I'm not.
Are we disrupting from?
Okay, let's stay up here.
Madam Mayor, you are, if we can work with the city administrator, whoever it is, I'm fine to leave you in your capacity, but we need to figure out that order, like so that nobody's a city manager or a mayor is holding an agenda hostage, or something of that nature, like that, so, in my opinion.
The mayor, stop.
Okay, hold on, we need the chatter to stop, we have to bring it back up here.
Please.
I'm sorry, Nathan, go ahead.
You may have heard a lot of, of word vomit from me right there, trying to speak through my own thoughts and actions, I'm not trying to distract, this is, this is obviously a big deal. If the mayor and the city manager, whoever that may be, can work together, I'd say, remain, but we can't hold agendas hostage, we can't try to pull things or change things at the last minute. So I say, remain, but there has to be strict deadlines as to when things are due, nothing can be pulled by a city administrator or a mayor at the last moment, and it has to be returned to, a lot of fighting over who had it, which I think is one of the main reasons this came up in the first place, based on previous administration and, and you coming in with our previous city manager, so.
Okay.
I want to make sure that.
Nobody takes it off, agenda off, which hasn't happened, so if we continue on, right? We continue on, you're okay with having the mayor?
I, who, Andy, can we set, you know, is there a final standard as to when, who gets to hit publish, who gets to hit send?
You're gonna have to specify it in the ordinance, because right now it's equal, it's, it's and/or, so it's both or one.
So we work together.
Doesn't really specify one or the other, so.
Right.
Both could say, I got the final say, so I did it, and that's in accordance with the language of the ordinance.
Right.
I will say, the ordinance right now does not address removal of proposed agenda items, which is I think what you're speaking to.
And we've not had that problem, right?
No, I was not saying we've had that problem, it was barely.
I was only talking about the issue, not whether, whether it's in happening or not. I'm only saying your ordinance right now is silent on that issue.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're okay keeping it mayor and/or?
Yes, I'm fine keeping it mayor and/or.
Okay, Scott?
Are we, Andy, can we establish, like, who gets to hit, or we need, or do we, as Dina, I believe is the one that publishes it?
I need that line, not 20 minutes, but before 5 o'clock.
Right.
That's what I need.
Right, which would be helpful.
To state that both the city administrator and the mayor must have made their final approvals by two hours prior to posting deadline, or by noon on the day of, can we set timelines on that?
Yes, you, you can say anything in the, in the ordinance, I would just caution you because those things are normally a working relationship with multiple, with, with departments and multiple officers at this, in a very short period of time. So that's not normally specified in an ordinance, it just is worked out as an internal procedure, like for example. It just is worked out as an internal procedure, like, for example, we had discussion about the last legislative session. Now, there's three business days between the, the meeting and the posting. That, just an extended time from when it used to be 72 hours. What that means is, your next meeting would be, not next week, but the following week, right? And your agenda would be, would have to be posted by 5:00 PM on that Wednesday. It would be a really good, in my view, internal policy to say, deadline's going to be Tuesday at noon. If we don't have city secretary, and this makes it easier on her, it makes her job easier, which makes everybody else's job easier. So, if we don't have the agenda in the packet by noon at Tuesday, it's going to go on the next agenda. And cities, some cities have difficult times adhering to those deadlines. Some do, some don't, depends on how rigidly they're followed. So, what you're talking about, really, in my view, is an internal policy, working policy, not something that should be the law, but you could put it in here. You could put it in the ordinance. There's nothing that would prohibit you from doing that.
No, I, I would definitely favor working internally to increase communication and figure out what those things are going to be. And so, I would say, my, my goal for you is, as mayor and whatever city administrator comes in next, would just be to work and set those internal policies, continue to work together to find that deadline, so that we can give city staff the best chance to succeed in this, so that we aren't having revisions or things we didn't see in the packet. And that would be, I hope you know, that would be my heart prime, is not trying to circumvent, but trying definitely to ease the load on, on Dina and the staff, the heads of departments, as they have to try to navigate this.
And that's one thing that Andy and I talked about today, is he and I are going to have a, a call on Mondays at 1:30 to go over anything that's hanging out there. But another reason was moving it to Monday for us to talk is to give you some relief and all of us.
All of us.
And to scramble at the last minute. Since I got here, that's exactly the way it is.
That's all we've done.
It is every, every, yeah, it's exhausting for you.
It's very difficult, because not only once y'all say it's blessed and ready to go, that's not just, okay, boom, and hit a button.
Right.
There's a lot of work that goes into that. So, if we could have a deadline that backs up before 4:40 on Wednesday afternoon, and it has to be posted at 5:00, that would be awesome.
Right.
That would make life easier for everyone.
So Andy, not going to do that, definitely.
If they don't make it by that deadline, move it to the next agenda, because we have another meeting in two weeks. I mean, next, tomorrow, we'll start working on the agenda, because it has to go out next Wednesday.
Right, so we're trying to ease that burden by he and I talking.
It's for the whole staff, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not scrambling.
Right.
Because we have been, for sure.
Yes, that's all we've done.
So, Andy, yeah, I, I think the "and/or" is problematic, because what it does is it puts two people or two parties responsible for one action. So, to me, that's, you know, if I, if I assign something to someone on my team at work, and I assign it to two different people, and I say, you both go do this, does it get done? Or does, do they both come up with the, you know, different problem, or different products that now I have to merge together at the last minute before I go present it? So I think that the, I do not want to take the mayor out of the, the equation at all, but I do think that the internal process that we need to go through in order to, if you've got, you've been working on an agenda, people have communicated to you an agenda items, and then we've communicated them through city staff, and you show up at, you know, we show up at 4:40 on Tuesday, and you've got to merge two documents together for an agenda, that's problematic. If we can address that through internal policy to ensure that that doesn't happen to our city staff and to our city agendas, then I'm fine.
Yeah, because I think that's what, what we just said.
Right, right.
Andy and I back it up. We give Dina and the staff, right? So you're okay with the mayor and/or, I mean, that, we're trying to get one that we can work well together, right?
I understand, yeah. I do wonder, and Andy, I, I brought this up a little bit ago, but this, this ordinance is from 2019.
Right.
That's six years ago. And I asked the question if there had been any other superseding documents that had come into play.
Not that I know of.
Well, I can already tell you, I was looking at this in section 103.035, where it says the city council is going to meet at 7:00, and we didn't meet at 7:00 tonight.
Oh, I know. I'm not saying it's all accurate.
Right. I just want to make sure, and I don't know if we need to table, if we need to bring this up as a different item later, but should there be some degree of review, revision of our ordinances to make sure that they are all codified properly, posted to the website properly, vetted properly, all of the things that need to get us to where we are, where everything matches where it's supposed to.
And your staff is working on that, you said? So they'll be updating dates to try to codify it, right?
They're working to codify this 2019 version.
Yeah, you've got two different things there. Yes, that, that the city is in process of codifying the governing ordinance. We are, we, we have not been asked to review all your ordinance to determine their, whether they're all up to date or been amended or supplemented. We could, we could do that within coordination with city staff. That's a, that's a different issue.
Right, and I don't know that, I mean, maybe this is something that we'd work through with, with Dina in terms of a thorough review of all of our ordinances to make sure that that's, you know, everything's up to date where it should be.
Right.
Right, and I, well, and I will say, because they included me in on this loop, the city attorney's office did, and the ordinance that you're discussing took me the entire day to find the history of that ordinance. Because I am under the understanding, back in 2019, we had a city secretary who possibly didn't do her job to the best of her ability, whatever. There are, I have also discovered, I cannot lay my hands on minutes, like, go in there, get a book and pull it out, and, and go back and say, okay, well, this is what happened, and here's the signed
Yikes.
documents that prove that. So, yes, this office needs to be reviewed.
So we need to get back on topic?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're kind of drifted off, so I'm going to bring us back.
I apologize for derailment.
Andy, if I may, on this one, I think we can bring the, the mayor and/or city administrator back. If we put in a schedule, I think what everybody has said is, since it's now, I believe, Wednesday at 5:00 PM is when we have to have it posted, if we have everything sent over to the city secretary the day before by noon, so that'd be Tuesday at noon, I think that would be, that would solve this issue completely.
Right.
Yes.
Does that need to be an ordinance or just an internal process?
Either one, and it could also be a resolution, it could also be a resolution. So a resolution is not a law. It's the same as a voice vote. It is a proclamation, the will of the council, but it's not, it's not law. Only an ordinance is law. So, if you wanted it to be a softer approach, you could do it, agenda-setting procedures through a resolution, or, or let it, let staff do it, you know.
I would feel comfortable doing it in the ordinance, and that way, it's, it's clear for everyone.
Okay.
So 12:00 on Tuesday, when she has to post it on Wednesday at 5:00. So Sean, are you okay with the mayor and/or?
Yeah, we have.
City administrator, you are?
I'm, I'm fine with what you're proposing. I mean, I just, I think for anything, for Dina, it's a matter of being able to publish this at the time. We've heard from staff that they've been literally stressed to the absolute last minute
Right.
of getting this done.
Right.
And we don't need to put that extra stress on staff.
Okay, so Dina, you can get that to us, the preliminary, by Tuesday, by noon?
I can, Tuesday at noon. Prior, prior to all of this, we were getting the preliminary when we, we posted the agendas on Friday, then we would get a preliminary out on Tuesday.
Okay.
That would be preliminary. We would send it to all the council, all the senior staff. This is what we have right now. If you have anything that's going to change, please let me know, so that we can get all of those items added and get your documents that back it up, et cetera, et cetera, prior to Thursday. So that's kind of, we had like a three or four day work, working go, but this new law that backed everything up a couple of days
Right.
has put a big spin on it and made it harder. So yes, I can do a preliminary on Monday, I can do a preliminary on Tuesday, however y'all wish to do that, I can definitely do that.
Well, we have our call on Mondays, so if you can get that preliminary to us on Mondays, then
On Monday.
then Andy and I can talk about that, and with the new city administrator would be lovely, because that's what I was.
And they will be the one that makes the staff, I would assume
Bring everybody together.
that would make the staff, you know, follow along the rules, so, yeah.
That would be great, so.
So this almost feels like this backs us up a little bit more, because if you want to do a draft to give to everybody to go review.
That's true, but we have been in the practice of doing a draft to mayor and staff and council, senior staff and council, just to say, hey, this is the items that we have currently coming up on the agenda for this coming week. Let me know your thoughts, or if you need to change something, you don't want that item on there, you want to push it off to the next meeting, or take it off altogether, whatever that may be, then you just let us know.
Okay.
We've already kind of been in that practice, but with this change.
Do y'all have a set time for your Monday meeting?
We, we've talked about it.
Yeah, we were just talking today about it, pushing it back, so we don't, you know, run into, we need to talk about that first, so.
So, so let me ask the question, so, the preliminary agenda, when would you like to have that sent out to us?
Well, I mean, I can do it Monday, or I can do it Tuesday. Just know that if you do it, if I do it on Tuesday, you know, that, that goes, he's shaking his head no, that goes against your 12:00 noon Tuesday deadlines, so that should be.
So Monday would be better.
So we could do maybe something like Monday by noon, we have the preliminary out, then we have 24 hours to then get every, all the documents together
For any changes, and then that gives us another 24.
Set it, and then gives us 2436 to actually publish it.
That's workable.
I, I would like.
This is not a, this is not a one-time event. It is a day, several day process. It culminates in the final agenda.
Can you draft that up into this, and we just redo that in that way for this one? What is the?
Sean, you have something to say?
I just, I just want to make sure, they, I don't know what y'all had said or what y'all talked about as far as your, your phone calls, but you got to have that prior to that, so.
Yeah, so 1:30 on Mondays, and as the attorney for the city to go over everything, and we, we talk about, is there something missing that we've got to get?
So if the preliminary is ready by Monday at noon, we're all good to go.
Yeah.
You need to change the meeting time, too.
Yeah.
Just throw that out there.
To 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
So it's on there?
So, so Andy, what's the best way moving forward on this one, so that way you can have the updates?
The process you've described, to me, sounds workable and will create a rhythm and alleviate a lot of pressure on city staff.
That's what I want.
So I, I, I would, I would fully recommend what y'all have discussed.
Okay.
And I'm happy to try to put that in a ordinance and bring it back for the next council meeting and.
Perfect, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that? "And/or," the mayor and/or, if that's in there? So, yep, who wants to make a motion for that?
Madam Mayor.
We, we were updating the ordinance again, and I said, I would.
Questions, I'm sorry?
I was going to say, if you're going to put a limiter out there, add these limits, you're going to mark it as an emergency. Do you need to order certain, that's all.
Emergency for what? I can't hear you.
Something that needs to be on the agenda, emergency doesn't fit that ordinance. Possibly somebody.
Okay, so let me, yeah, let me talk about that. So what we're talking about, for clarity's sake, these are for regular meetings. There are two regular meetings in every month, right? Those could be canceled, but normally you have two meetings a month. We're not talking about a special meeting, we're not talking about an emergency meeting. So special meetings can be called at will by the mayor or three council members. These really don't apply to that, and emergency meetings can be called on two hours' notice if it has to be a true emergency. That's very rare. So this is really not applying to that either. So, these are regular agenda, twice-a-month meetings that we're really talking about, what happens month in and month out.
Okay, so you'll make those changes for us, then Andy, on it?
I will.
Okay, so do we need to vote on the "and/or"? Do we have a motion?
We have one more comment.
I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
In your closing remarks, it seemed to indicate the city staff might also be able to add minutes instead of council.
On what?
That really goes to the city manager, usually. Yeah, or, or, or council members, but it's usually the city manager's, because, just practically speaking, that's how that works.
Well, even on this agenda, we have stuff that is put forth by city staff. So I don't think we should take that away.
Right, but the only thing I want on that is to have a name, like Tony, when Tony came up, it'd be nice to know, okay, Tony, and then if anybody has a question, we know to go to Tony, and Gene's got his hand up. Go ahead.
While you're at it, do you want to consider reinstating the citizens to be able to?
So do we want to vote on that? Let's make a motion first on that mayor and/or.
I don't think we vote on that.
City administrator?
We're going to have him make those changes.
He's going to make changes.
So we don't need to vote on anything, we're good? Okay, so we're going to move on?
But if you're going to discuss that point, I, I need direction.
About the citizens? Are they being taken out? You said.
Well, they're not in the current, they're not in the, the current ordinance.
So we can put them in? Are we okay with that?
What's the process for that?
Yeah, we don't have a process.
I mean, I, it's not going to be, it's not going to be, that is highly unusual, that that would be in any ordinance or charter. I, yours is the only one I've ever seen it in, the prior one. So, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just normally those things get percolated through council members and staff, right? And, and, and so like in your charter, what he, what, what the chair was talking about tonight, in your charter, you're going to have something called referendum and initiatives, and those are, those are significant processes that citizens control when they disagree with councils, and can make a council pass a law, or make a council put an issue to an election to a vote. So they're very, they're, they are very powerful, there are processes in place, and they're going to vet them on, cities don't always have the same processes for that, but those are the most significant ones that the people will have.
So the citizens can put something on the agenda now?
No.
They cannot?
It's not in, it's not in the ordinance.
So are we suggesting we keep them out of?
I would think that's our role. I would think that that's our role as representatives. I, I don't think that it's, you know, we, that's how this has been, you know, this is how other cities work, too, and this is not, you know, we're here to represent you, and if you have a question or something you want on the agenda, that's, that's us to come help you do, right? Right, Gene?
Well, since you asked.
Whoa, you've got lots of hands, oh my goodness, okay.
No, I have a comment.
Okay.
I understand what Andy's saying about the validity of the previously passed ordinance. That ordinance was not published to the citizens. The citizens have a view of the online municipal code, so the citizens think they have the ability to submit an item for the agenda. The city has been operating under two sets of books. Do you think so?
Do you understand what he's saying?
We're working on that.
Well, yeah, we are operating under two sets of books. We have one law that we're operating under, it's just it was not codified, unfortunately, and I have no idea why that is the case, but that does happen from time to time, so.
Marcy, get your hand up. Marcy, get your hand up.
So the way citizens right now would request an agenda item would be either to email the city council, or we come here and speak through public comments and ask questions. And if y'all can't answer our questions at that time, it says on our agendas that any item that the citizen comes to discuss could be put on a future council agenda.
So it's in there now, we're?
That part is definitely, yeah, that's part of the open meetings.
Which has happened. Which has happened.
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes?
I know a previous council member, he would send a question out and something like that. Never never respond, and that, you got it. That is why we can't rely on you representing us. If a person out here requests an answer from a council, and they don't call back, they won't email back, that's it. I, I don't think I ever sent one to a lot of people in here, and I never hear any back.
So do you want to address that?
Sure, um, so you're, you're talking about the part of the agenda that's citizen comments. And most cities have those on their agendas, and y'all, y'all, the people have a right to speak on the agenda items.
Okay, but just getting up here and commenting, what does that do?
I know, but, so let me, let me, let me just complete my, complete my thought. So, so you have the right to speak, and, and you have the right to speak on anything that's on the agenda, and to be heard, but that's not a corresponding question and answer session. That doesn't turn it into a question and answer session between the citizens and your representatives. They can, they can speak, but they're limited, under, under the law, they're only limited to very few things they can say. One is put it on agenda, one is clarifying a matter of fact, or asking for a policy issue. That's all they can do, they can't, it's not, it's not a question and answer session, it's not designed to be that. It's simply designed by the legislature to be a time to speak and a time to hear, with very limited response by your, by your council.
He said, representatives, that, that's what, you take care of it.
Right.
But if a citizen calls, or a council member, or somebody in the local council should respond, and not just kind of meetings off every time, and say, I like the motion for the, it's a good idea, we don't need it. We know, everybody knows, we all know, we want, we want.
Okay, so you're going to write it up, and we're going to bring it back in for another meeting, right?
Yes, I will, I will have it by next Tuesday at noon.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all right.
Monday, Monday at noon.
So we're moving on, moving on to item 11, discussion and action approval of resolutions of advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Green Ribbon Program for the Beautification Improvements. So who's representing this? We don't have a name. Step forward, there you are.
Hi, I'm Amy McCarley, I'm the Parks Director.
All right.
So this discussion, action item, is approval of a resolution and advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for our Green Ribbon Program for Beautification Improvements. As y'all know, we were awarded the $400,000 grant, structured for reimbursement. Council has also approved Westwood to help sign said, the, said Green Ribbon Project. And now Texas Department is requiring us, as a city, to approve a resolution of advanced funding agreement. The city council of the city of Willow Park hereby approves entering the advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Green Ribbon Program relating to the design and construction of the I-20 frontage roads from Micus Road to east of Micus Road, and further authorizes the city administrator to execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Willow Park. The project estimated cost is $400,000, and Texas Department is responsible for the entire amount of $400,000. However, any costs overrun are 100% the responsibility of the city of Willow Park. Staff recommends approval for resolution to enter into an advanced funding agreement for Texas Department for the Green Ribbon Program.
Do we have any?
Discussion?
Do we have any extra funds in the parks?
Yes.
Okay.
How much? Do we know?
I mean, I know my budget number, but I don't know how much, hopefully this will not go over.
Right.
Um, but since this is on the I-20 frontage, I was not hoping it would be taken out of parks.
I know.
But yes, we'll, we've talked with Jake, our attorney, so we've got fluctuation in there for any overages, obviously, as costs arise.
Can we work just right up to that money instead of going over?
Do what?
So can we work right up to that money and not go over and?
And not finish the project? Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of advancing funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Green Ribbon Program for Beautification Improvements.
I will second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna, you're going to stay right there, aren't you?
Yes.
There you were. You're not going anywhere. Okay, now I'm going to flip, flip, flip. Okay, 12, discussion and action approval of the Texas Department of Transportation Landscape Maintenance Agreement for the Green Ribbon Grant. Okay, it will be an increase to our landscaping budget to maintain the new area. I'm sure you know all that. Go ahead.
So this is an agreement we have to sign with Texas Department to say that we will get water, we will irrigate, we will maintain, we do all that for this area. So that's, it's required of this, if we don't sign it, then we don't get this grant. So if the city will maintain all green ribbon landscape elements within the limits of right-of-way, including all median and island areas, but not excluding paved areas intended for vehicular travel. Landscape maintenance shall include, but not limited to, plant maintenance, replacement, mowing, trimming, hardscape, and irrigation operation and maintenance. The city will be responsible for all utility costs. All elements must be maintained in a functional and aesthetically pleasing condition. Staff recommends approval of landscape maintenance agreement as presented.
Andy, quick question, do we have an estimate of the additional cost of the maintenance for that?
I do not, at this time. I don't foresee it being a lot, because it's not, it's not a large area.
Yeah.
With the infrastructure for water, I mean, that alone, I think it would be expensive.
Yeah.
That water, the getting water there is part of the $400,000.
Okay, okay.
Now, then once, then when we water.
We're paying for the water, gotcha, okay.
Right, that's water.
So that's including the infrastructure along with plant life?
Mm-hmm, we'll put a meter out there, and then we'll know at that time.
Are they going to be working with you or Chase on as far as how they design, how they complete their projects?
Are you talking about Texas Department or Westwood, or both?
Either, all of them.
So we hired Westwood to do this project for us and with us. And so we have, you have me, you have Tony, you have Chelsea, you have Chase and Gretchen, all working with Westwood on the design and, and getting water, electricity there, all this other stuff. Because we want it to be, we also would like to get a monument sign put there, since that's our most westward entrance. Most people drive through, don't even know you're in Willow Park. You know you're in Weatherford, you know you're in Hudson Oaks. You think you're in Alito, right? So that's, that's kind of the, that's the whole point of this, a lot of it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion before we move? Okay, so recommendation motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Texas Department of Transportation Landscape Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, done, all right, now we're going to 13, and Scott has removed this item. So we are moving on from 13, heading to 14. Okay, so I requested 14 to receive an update on the city hall spacing plan to be developed by Jacob and Martin, as approved in November 2024. A recommendation was to be provided to council no later than May of 2025. So I called Derek Turner on this to ask about it. And after speaking with Derek Turner at Jacob and Martin to prepare for this item, I learned that a meeting was held December 2024 to assess our current building, but never progressed from there. This effort, this effort was quickly placed on hold due to a lack of any scope of work with the project specifications. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Okay. All right, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, the city council will recess into executive session to discuss items 15 through 18 under the following Texas Open Meetings Act, exceptions. Item 15, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property for the city hall at 120 El Chico Trail lease agreements. And number 16, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.087, economic development negotiations on the proposed residential development consisting of approximately 82.37 acres situated in the Macarver Survey, Abstract 910, the West Franklin Survey, Abstract 468, the M.M. Edwards Survey, Abstract 195, and the J.B. Winn Survey, Abstract 1637, a portion being within the ETJ and remainder within the city limits of the city of Willow Park, Parker County. Texas known as the Clarion, former known as the Bluffs. Item 17, yes, sir?
You said you were going to remove 16 from executive session before we started?
Mm-hmm.
We should have got you before you said all of that.
Yeah. I didn't want to interrupt.
Thank you. I was on a roll, I mean, I was going, okay, scratch 16, so sorry. Number 17, okay? 17 pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.074, personnel matters to liberate the appointment, employment, and evaluation of a public officer employee interim city manager. Review resumes provided by SGR. Item 18, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Texas Open Meetings Act decorum for the mayor and the city council members requested by Mayor Palmer. Okay, so it is 8:19, and we are going to recess into executive session, thank you. 48, um, so we want to consider action on a few items. I know one that I would like to bring up is number 17. We talked about having our two city administrative, assistant council, I mean, council manager. La, 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 it's tied, I'm going. Okay, and so we've talked to both Tony and Michelle. Where we are sitting is we want to give both of them a $4,000 a month raise to be interim. We are going to have Tony take the lead, so when we communicate, things will go to Tony, and she will dispatch them where they need to go. But I need to have a motion to give them both raise, yes?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Antoinette Toni Fisher and Michelle Gelker as both interim city managers for the city of Willow Park, with Toni Fisher being the primary point of contact, and give both Toni Fisher and Michelle Gelker a temporary raise while doing the duties of $4,000 per individual per month.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Do that first.
Give it to Sean.
We got that part done.
And everybody does know they're doing their current jobs in addition to the new jobs, so it's, we're not just throwing money out there.
Right, until we find a city manager.
Exactly, we're still going to interview.
We're looking for a city manager.
Permanent.
Permanent, not an interim is what we talked about, right?
So does anybody have 15 through 18?
You got it.
Any motions on anything else before we move on? That's a no, okay. For item 19, um, since there were no specific items for council prior to posting on the agenda, we're moving on to my comments. Uh, mine is actually, uh, going forward, the criticism of Councilman Contreras for verbally attacking a private citizen. I know we talked about that a lot tonight, but I'd like to say that there'll be no more attacking private citizens from this dais, especially when it has zero to do with city business. It hurts our city as a whole, not just a few of us, but all of us. When we treat each other disrespectfully at the dais, it is an embarrassment to everyone who lives in Willow Park. As the mayor and presiding officer of the meetings, I will not allow any further attacks on private citizens. Uh, we talked a lot about decorum also, and we're going to work on that. I would like to, uh, one thing I would like to say is, we've had a lot of meetings. We had 20 items on, if not more. I would like to propose that we take the next meeting off for October, there you go, for October 28th. So I would like to get a motion if someone's interested in doing that. Anyone want to make a motion for skipping the next meeting?
I'm not opposed to, but I'd like to kind of see what builds up.
I was going to say I have, and I, again, 13 was where I'm moving that to the next meeting, and we need to move on that sooner rather than later.
And you need to decide what you're going to do on November 11th, because that is a scheduled city council meeting night.
November 11?
November 11.
Because that's the Veterans.
Right.
Falls on the holiday, Veterans Day.
And Mayor Pro Tem program is going to be out anyway, right?
For November, yes. So that would be the issue, then, if we skip next one, and then the next one falls on Veterans Day. We usually cancel the second one in November because of Thanksgiving, you're not looking at meeting again until.
Before or the week after.
Right, we have to have a special call meeting during one of those times, or just, my vote would be to, to stay with the, the schedule as is. I agree, we've had a lot recently, but let's.
We have.
Let's, we're almost to the holiday season where we expect typically one a month. Let's, let's finish October strong, and then we can look at.
I mean, that's my birthday, and I'm going to have a meeting on it soon.
Okay, well.
Which date is your birthday?
October 28th, that's my.
Oh, hmm, that sounds great.
I'd rather do nothing more than have a council meeting.
Okay, so everybody still wants to have another meeting, is that right?
I would love nothing better.
What I, and I bet you would. Okay, so we're not going to cancel the next meeting, we're still going to have another one, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
October 28th.
Okay, so we're going to have another meeting. So I would like to have someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, there's, there's more items on here.
Okay, I don't have, what do you have?
There's still future agenda items, I know you were talking about it, but I don't know if anybody else has any.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has anything on there. So future event, agenda items requested by the mayor and city council and staff. I can say that we've been requesting two items, since we're going to go have a meeting. Uh, the first discussed the appointment of a financial oversight advisory committee. And the second to discuss starting the process to update our 2014 comprehensive plan, which is long overdue. So those are two things, if we're going to have the meeting on the 28th, that we can go over.
I have a number of items I'd like to, to propose as well.
Okay, you're going to send those in, you want to talk about?
I can, I can briefly talk about them, and then I'll send them in.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, um, I do want to pick up the discussion on the Squaw Creek Road project in the next meeting, getting report from staff, uh, from the town hall meeting and the communication plan, and any engineering updates we have, and potentially an authorization to pursue funding. Uh, the second item is a status update on the Bankhead Highway Road project, where we are with that in terms of the, a potential annexation agreement, along with the, the letter of intent from Ryder Scott. Also, um.
So we want to address that again?
I think we need to.
Yeah, we did, we just kind of let it go.
We, we tabled it, and it didn't get met, get back on, so I want us to go through that one again.
Okay.
Now that we've had a little bit of time to digest and, and think through it, and, and I've had some discussions with our city engineer and some of our other folks, so I think that it'd be a good idea for us to discuss that one again. I think that we need to revisit the building status update. I want to know where we are with that one, and, and what we need to do to move that one forward. So those are the three things that I had.
And you'll have updates for us on those?
Of course.
Okay, so we'll go over those also. Anything else?
I have an agenda item, but I would like to add to Texas pledge from this point forward, I like that.
That's good, yes.
If we can do that.
Okay, anybody else? Do y'all want to go home?
Yes.
Anybody ready? Okay, so, can I get a motion to adjourn now?
I move adjourn, I second.
You got a lot of six, all in favor? Thank you, Whataburger it is.